Good evening. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for February 11th, 2020, to order. Can we begin with the roll call, please?
Yeah, Chair Tagney.
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Vase- Vaseed Alcock.
Here.
And Commissioner Barstow.
Here.
Thank you. We're joined at the staff table this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah and Senior Planner Joe Matier. We will move on to oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the Commission on items not on the agenda. If there was anybody that would like to speak to that, step up to the podium. Seeing none, we will move on to our consent calendar. We only have one item on that, which is to approve Planning Commission minutes for our regular meeting, January 28th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. And we will move on to our first public hearing of the evening, which is to consider the adoption of Planning Commission Resolution Number PC-20-01, a recommendation to the City Council to approve the plan development permit and design review permit and associated environmental determinations for the Arcata Community Health Center project. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner with the City of Arcata and the assigned planner for this project. This is the Planning Commission's fourth hearing on this item. We did start out in November to introduce the project. In December, we held a scoping meeting for the draft environmental impact report, and then in January, we, January 28th, we held a meeting, and that meeting was continued to this evening's meeting. The staff is recommending that the City Council adopt PC Planning Commission Resolution 20-01. That will be found as Attachment A of your staff report, page 10. That attachment includes Exhibit 1, the findings of approval, and the findings of approval include plan development, permit findings, design review findings, development agreement findings, as well as the general plan consistency findings. Exhibit 2 of that resolution would be the conditions of approval. There's a, that will be on packet page 22 of your, your staff report. The Exhibit 3 is the term sheet for the development agreement. Last time, the Commission did not have the benefit of reviewing that. We did have an opportunity to meet with representatives from the Open Door Clinic and go over the obligations. That term sheet that you'll find on packet page 27, again, is something that will be reviewed by the City Council. It is only required at this point because the city doesn't have a traffic mitigation fee program that's adopted. So we're utilizing the development agreement as a mechanism to be able to collect those fees and then use those for the purposes of transportation improvements. It does include some obligations from the applicant, the developer, which would be the Open Door Clinic, and then the city as well. We really pared those obligations down. I know there was a discussion last meeting regarding what happens if the project is approved and the obligations aren't met and the property is transferred to a different owner. We don't believe that's a, it won't be necessarily identified in this term sheet because that's not the development agreement is a legal document, and that would be reviewed by the city attorney. But staff does not believe that's going to be an issue because the terms and the obligations are designed to have those obligations fulfilled prior to building occupancy. So it's really important for the clinic to, pretty much with all developments, they want to get occupancy as soon as they can. There's been a lot of expenditures and costs in developing that, and they want to start seeing the benefits of their efforts in that. It was interesting when we met with their staff, the, through the regulatory process, and how they go through billing and how it takes, you know, quite a while for a clinic, a medical clinic like this, to go through the process and establish kind of a baseline so they can collect fees. So they might not see any, any collection of fees from this service that they provide to the public for, for quite a while. So, you know, they do want to get out from under the, any loan agreements they have, and so being that the obligations are due to be met prior to occupancy, it's a really big incentive for the, the developer to go and meet those conditions. So again, staff does not believe that's going to be an issue, and that if the property did sell, under the, when the, prior to the obligation of those, there would be a condition that that development agree, agreement pass on to subsequent owners, similar to any deed restriction or something like that you might have. So that you'll find, excuse me, the term sheet on Exhibit 3 of Attachment A. Exhibit 4 and 5 are the portions of the property that are going to be vacated by the city, and so those are kind of the diagram and the legal description of those areas. One is an easement and one is a deed. Those are, again, leftovers from the Caltrans when they developed the four-lane Highway 101. Attachment B is the final environmental impact report. This, and then Attachment C is the SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, facts of finding, statement of overriding conditions. And those two documents were not provided to the Planning Commission previously. As you recall, there was, the item was continued last, last meeting in order to allow the applicant and staff to meet with representatives of the Wiat tribes to go over some of the concerns they might have regarding the development at this site. We did provide some supplemental information to them. They reviewed that and came back with recommendation for us to kind of modify the conditions of approval to include cultural monitors during ground distributing activities. And so the, the final EIR and the statement of overriding considerations and the findings as well for the project all reflect that revision. So just to circle around on that, again, we did meet and concur with the representatives of the Wiat tribes, the tribal historic preservation officers, and they will allow this project to proceed with cultural monitors on-site during ground distributing activities. And so we, that's not an uncommon standard protocol. In some cases, we have inadvertent discovery of cultural resources, artifacts, things like that. These items are protected through state law as well as federal regulations, and so, you know, we certainly want to honor the concerns of the tribes and respect that. And the applicant, they did suggest the cultural monitors from the get-go, so it was something that they were willing to do for this project. So we appreciate the cooperative nature of both the, the Wiat tribes and the applicant and the work that the city did to come up with that agreement. The draft, or the final EIR does encompass all the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. There are some public comments that were received during the review period. We did not have any agency comments during the review period, so there's no comments or responses to that. We did respond, that you'll find in the final ERR, to the public comments that were received. And then again, Attachment C is the kind of statement of facts of findings, and really, it boils down to, if you look at page, packet page 112 and 113, those are kind of the statement of overriding considerations. To re-circle around on that item, the transportation was the only item that appeared to have a significant effect on the environment and that through the payment of a, improvements of a prorated project, we did a traffic study. So there were six projects identified, and all of them were required to contribute payment to that improvement. So that is the reason why we had to do an environmental impact report. If we had a fee mitigation program, we probably would have been able to do a mitigated NAGDEC on this. So there is a lot of extra work that the city and the applicant had to do to move through the environmental review process. At that, I do have, nothing's really changed as far as the project, other than the conditions of approval we spoke to before, and then also the terms of the development agreement that you'll find as Exhibit 3 of your Attachment A. Again, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the Planning Commission Resolution 20-01. That would be a recommendation to the City Council. We are, if the Planning Commission does take action tonight, we are scheduled to move this project forward to the Planning Commission at the earliest as possible, and it could be as early as March 4th. And there will be a number of, through the vacation of the, the easement and the deed parcel, there are a number of hearing schedules that we have to file, the Streets and Highways Code for the, that vacation or abandonment of that, those rights of way. So the Planning Committee, or the City Council will be following that tract as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Oh, I do want to circle around one item that came up last time was the term rural. Within, you'll see that is still in the Planning Commission Resolution, and the staff report did identify that. We reviewed kind of our standards with the Housing and Urban Development Federal Agency and also the California Code for Public Health and Safety, and Arcata does qualify as a rural community. Thank you.
Joe, you just mentioned March 4th. That's to the City Council. Is that what you, I think you indicated.
Yes, sir.
The Planning Commission. Okay, great. Are there any Commission questions of staff on that report? Seeing none, we will open up to the public comment portion of the hearing. Would the applicant or their agent like to speak? Would anybody else in the audience like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion and move on to Commission deliberations and/or a motion. Questions, comments, anything?
I do have a question about whether the building design and landscape design remain the same that we saw last time, or whether there have been changes.
There's been no changes that staff is aware of for that project.
Yeah, I think the direction from last time was to reduce some of the density of planting of the myrtles on the northwest side around the enclosure. The, and there were a couple of other recommendations as to how to modify landscaping overall. I think the landscape architect took that in and was going to prepare a final. I do believe that there's a condition of approval that leaves the, you know, any minor modifications based on that to the director. Certainly, they'll be going through a next step with the City Council, and the City Council will make the final authorization. And so if there are specific recommendations to the landscape plan that you'd like to make, it'd be, now would be a good time to make those, and we could formalize those in a recommendation to the City Council and ensure that that landscape plan incorporates those recommendations.
I do want to just point out that I did pull up Condition of Approval A19, and so they will be submitting a final landscape plan. This is oftentimes when they're kind of developing the site and they find out, it's like, oh, you know, if we move it the curb this way. And so there's typically slight changes to it, but it does require approval by the Director of Community Development for that.
I don't recall having any, any great concerns about the landscape plan. You talked about the myrtles. That was really more of a, of a suggestion to the, the applicant to avoid future problems.
The other thing I recall from that meeting was ensuring that the lines of sight were clear under the larger plantings, to ensure they're large enough that we'll have clear lines of sight, and so we'll make sure and pay attention to that as well.
Yeah, a few comments. We get to do this because we slog through reading the entire packet, including some of the material three times. First, I, I thought that the findings in the statement of overriding consideration were really well done, and they, they definitely expressed the values that this project will bring to the city that justify any traffic impacts that remain unmitigated, at least for the time being, in my mind. Second, the development agreement terms were really easy to read, and I did appreciate actually having reference to specific amounts of money in there, as well as to the timetable. So thank you very much for providing that at this time. Third, about that use of the word rural. I noticed that it stayed in the areas where you'd used it, but in later parts of the document that we had, it, it, it didn't appear, and no one was harping on it. The reason I brought it up is, is that although this project may be serving a rural clientele, as well as patients in the City of Arcata, I feel like the, the more we refer to Arcata as rural, the less we are going to be able to justify the very substantial increases in things like housing density and that the city is going to be proposing with the Arcata Gateway Plan and in many other areas. I've, I've heard people say that a rural community really doesn't need so much high-density housing. And so if we want to have it both ways, I think we need to be very clear about where we use that term rural and where we're not going to use it. Arcata may be rural for some respects. With regard to state designations, the Census has designated Arcata as part of the Eureka Arcata Urban Core in the Eureka Arcata Micropolitans Statistical Area, which means that although the Census considers the county rural, it doesn't consider the City of Arcata necessarily rural. It considers it as part of the urbanized core with a population between 10,000 and 50,000 people. So I think we're fine calling ourselves urban and not getting stuck in what may become a trap. And that may be something that will require us to revisit one of the statements in our vision for the general plan, which also describes Arcata as rural, and then goes on and describes all kinds of urban values that we want to espouse as well. Anyway, done with my rant. An issue came up with some of the comments about the VMT versus LOS designation, and it does appear that this particular SEQA document came in right under the wire in terms of legitimately considering congestion and level of service as the analytical threshold determiner. In some of our other material, I think beyond SEQA, and I get, I understand that we were looking at that in the SEQA document and the SEQA comments, beyond SEQA and other planning documents, I think it's really important to continue to use both of those means of evaluation and then to emphasize safety above and beyond either. So to the extent that, you know, SEQA might require us to mitigate or to have a statement of overriding considerations for things like traffic, yeah, we're going to be looking at those vehicle miles traveled. But for all other planning purposes in Arcata, I think we need to look at all three of those things and not drop any of them. So you made a really clear response to the comment around that. One of the things I was wondering about with the, the wetland mitigation is somewhere, I think it, I can't remember who said this now. We expected that there was going to be some indication of where that roundabout at Foster and Alliance would be built, and I understand that the mitigation monitoring report was actually written before that came up, but I didn't see that anywhere else in the packet. And when we're looking at longer-term conservation and development for that mitigation wetland, it would be really, really nice to know how far the wet areas are going to be from the sidewalk. So I, it's too late to put that in there now, I think, but I kind of want to know. And I, I know they said it wouldn't interfere, but I'd like to see that on a map.
We'll see if we can pull this up right now while you're going through deliberations. The traffic study, which, again, thank you for acknowledging, did include an analysis of both traffic safety, non-motorized traffic safety, and vehicle miles traveled. So we did include that in our traffic analysis. It also showed examples of the, the mitigations, the proposed mitigations for traffic, which included a design for the roundabout. So that was included in the record. What we'll try and do is draw your attention to where specifically in the record that was included, so we can take a look at it real quick here, but.
Okay. I think we did that, I think we did that once, and, and, you know, we got it pointed out to us, but I, but I haven't actually seen any graphic that would show how far the sidewalks are going to be from the slope down to the wetland and, you know, what. It would just be, be nice to see it all in the same place.
I can, I can point it out to you on the map. We don't have a map that has both those features on it at one time, but I can point it out to you on the map that we have included in our packet tonight, and we'll, we'll look for that.
Oops. Okay, and I think it's going to be an exciting project, and I'm looking forward to seeing the new open-door health center built, so.
Thank you, Judith, for your thorough questions and comments. Anybody else? All right. If you'd like to see that map, we should do that, and then we're looking for, if there's no other concerns, a motion.
Actually, there, there was one other thing I just wanted to say, and it's, it's kind of an editing thing. The, the traffic mitigation, the traffic impact mitigation fee is called like four different things across all of these documents, and it, it would be great in future if we could have one term for this thing so that we really know what we're talking about. In some parts of the document, it's called one thing, in other parts, it's called something else, and in more parts, it's called something else yet again. So if we, we, you know, we can't change any of the documents that have already been produced, but it would be really nice to have a single term for this going forward.
We can, we can go through, if you want us to, and make that cleanup edit through the City Council's packet, if you wanted us to, you know, change that. I, I think that's a, that's a good catch, so we'll see if we can catch as many of those and refer to it as the same throughout the documents.
Great.
So here is the, zoom in on this here. This is out of the Central Arcata Area-Wide Traffic Study that was relied on for the environmental document for this project. You can see that the design build-out right now is designed to basically be inside the existing contour that describes the existing sidewalk, or outside of it, rather. And so there's a little bit that we need, you know, on this corner, and a little bit carved off this corner, but this corner basically stays exactly as it is. And so really, anything that's inside here is going to be outside of that footprint, but you're interested in exactly how far outside. If you turn to packet page 58, which, I don't, do you have the packet? We'll get packet page 58 up. So using the back of walk as a delineator for, for that, that feature, the closest the sidewalk will get to the top of bank of the newly-created wetland is about 10 feet, and it's approximately 60 or 70 feet from the back of walk on the corner of the, 60 to 70 feet on the back of walk of the corner of, of Foster and Alliance, you know, which if you were designing a, a perfect world, you would want larger setbacks, but we are designing around what we have existing. What you see here on the screen indicates wetlands that were identified already, vegetated setbacks, and some setbacks that have some, some other hydric plants inside of them. And then really, right along this edge here, there's a ditch that types out as a wetland. A little further south here, you know, as you drive by, if you've noticed recently, they've, there was a fire inside there, inside the vegetation here, and they've hacked back, so you can see there's standing water in this area right here. And so these are all, you know, sort of immediately adjacent to the roadside wetlands, probably somewhat impacted by impoundment related to being right next to the roadside. And so this will just increase that complex. You'll have sort of a, you know, a, a complex of wetland and upland, near-wetland habitats that, that, you know, accommodate this, or encompass this entire corner, really. So it'll be a nice added feature because right now, this is pretty low-quality habitat, this area right here, and so this will really increase the, the quality of the habitat there and really, you know, connect and extend the Shea Park wetland features out to the corner here.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other Commission deliberations and/or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PC 20-01. Recommend to the Arcata City Council to approve the plan development permit and design review permit and associated environmental determinations for the Arcata Community Health Center project.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of this, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to the applicants. We look forward to the groundbreaking. Yeah.
My husband would have recorded it for posterity, so. Do you want to all get, do you want to all get in also? Thank you.
Okay. That ends our public hearing for the evening. We have one business item to move on to, and that's to consider increasing the cannabis use permit cap in the Cannabis Innovation Zone.
So this item before you tonight is really a, you know, I have much of a staff report formulated. It's really a preliminary discussion to see, you know, should we start formulating staff reports and initiating a code amendment to change the limitation on the total number of use permits allowable in the Cannabis Innovation Zone. Joe's pulled up a map here that indicates the Cannabis Innovation Zone off of West End Road, bracketed by that and Highway 101. The dark gray areas are Area 2. Within Area 2, a use permit is required. The lighter gray areas are Area 1, and within Area 1, you are principally permitted to do most types of cannabis production activities. And so the area within Area 2, when we were having this discussion with the, the community in 2015, 2016, there was a lot of fear, that there would be lots of speculation, that businesses that were established in this industrial zone would be displaced, and we would go through a boom-bust cycle, and then we'd be left with sort of the, you know, the remnants or, or the legacy of, you know, all of that speculation. And so in addition to the, and if you recall, at the time, we talked about using a use permit as the, the mechanism to try and regulate how many of these were issued versus, you know, using a cap. know, using a cap. And at the time, we decided, look, you know, let's use both a use permit and a cap. That way, we can, you know, ensure that, you know, if this thing just blows up real quick, we can, you know, tap the brakes at 20 and then revisit. Well, that was back in 2016 when the regulations were first established, and to date, over the past four years or so, three, four years, we have 16 use permits, and Joe has those up on the screen now. So 16 of 20 have been issued by the city council, I'm sorry, by the planning commission, rather. There are four available. Do you know how many applications we have?
Zero applications.
Okay, we have no new applications.
There's two, I know.
We've had public inquiries about two other applications coming in, so I do suspect those to be coming in soon.
So we're nearing the cap pretty rapidly here, and I just wanted to open the conversation to sort of determine whether or not the city council or the planning commission wants to initiate a code amendment to either eliminate the cap, up the cap, you know, change, you know, directions, keep the cap the way that it is, or, you know, or what. And so that's really what this item is for. I don't have anything, you know, really prepared, but, you know, the one thing I will say is that, you know, we are still, even though it's three years out, in the very early stages of, you know, of this industry, this fledgling industry, and it still hasn't quite gotten its legs under its feet, its feet under its legs, that it's still trying to, you know, find, you know, between the regulation at the state level, the regulation at the local level, and, you know, all of the fees that are associated with, you know, running these businesses, people are still trying to figure out, you know, is there a viable, you know, business for them here? You know, so on the one hand, there are a lot of businesses that are really struggling. On the other hand, there are several businesses that have really hit their stride, and this is one of the fastest-growing job markets in Arcata. I would pause it right now. We certainly have, you know, there's still a little bit of a seasonal variation in the, you know, in terms of the peak production and that sort of thing, and so the manufacturing end of it, the distribution of it also, you know, ebbs and flows. But some of these parcels have gone from having, you know, a handful of employees, maybe five employees, who, you know, managed largely heavy freight and that sort of thing, to having hundreds of employees that are, you know, working multiple shifts. And so it's been incredible for job growth in a lot of respects. There's, you know, we're not at the limit yet. We don't have people, you know, banging down our door, but wanted to have the conversation before, you know, we're in a pressure situation and having somebody who's, you know, investment or livelihood is on the line. So just wanted to kick it over to you and ask, you know, are there certain questions that you would want to make sure that we were answering and addressing before raising the cap, or do you feel confident moving forward with the recommendation of the city council, or, you know, in terms of whether we should initiate that code amendment, or where do you want to go with this conversation?
Any commission thoughts on that?
I had a question. With regards to the current permit holders, have there been any conversation with them and with regards to what that would look like for them if we increased the cap or had no cap?
No, this is a really preliminary stage. I'm kind of guessing a little bit here as to what your question is about. Maybe you can help, you know, flesh it out for me, but if the question is, you know, is there a competitive issue out there that we're, you know, need to be protectionists with our planning policies? You know, I mean, I, you know, fully acknowledge that, you know, planning does have a large impact on, you know, economics, and we certainly want to take that into consideration. The majority of the businesses that I've spoken with, there's enough diversity going on out there with the different business types, and because this is a fledgling industry, there's going to be a high failure rate. There are a lot of businesses, folks are getting into business, and they may know a lot about cannabis, they may be very well-connected with cannabis, but don't know a whole lot about running a business. There's a lot of competition out there statewide, and so the business types, the connections, the networks that, you know, these businesses are making that happen to get these first 20, may or may not be successful. And so to some extent, I guess, you know, if I were to say, well, what's the economic overlay on this planning decision? I would offer that allowing more flexibility, more freedom, that still doesn't have the unanticipated or undesirable impacts that we were concerned about with the boom and bust is probably the best, you know, if you could hit that, that sort of fine line, I think that would be the best for the industry, for the city, and for the employees.
So I just have a question. Bear with me, I'm still learning. With a number of permits, say, particular businesses do, for whatever reason, fail.
Mm-hmm.
I'm thinking like the ABC, there's a limited amount of permits, or, help me with this.
Yeah, licenses for alcohol, for me.
Right. So is there like a way that if someone comes out, that opens the door for someone else to come in? I guess my concern is saturation of the market, and then nobody makes any money.
Well, it does. So the ABC permit issue is slightly different. On the retail side of things, you know, certainly bars, you know, can have a significant negative impact in a community, and so the, you know, city, the ABC, the police, you know, city police, we're all concerned about concentrations and total numbers. And so on the retail side, we also have a cap and a limitation, and, you know, we're not anywhere near that cap right now, and we're not recommending that we have that conversation at this point for the retail end of it. In terms of the manufacturing, distribution, all of the different uses that are allowed in this zone, I don't think that we're anywhere near a level of activity where you would start to see some sort of negative impact economically associated with that. It could be that you have businesses out there that have a license right now, that if they go under, they actually come in and say, look, we don't want our license anymore. But the permits run with the land, and so if that permit holder goes away, they still have something marketable, and more than likely, what they would try and do is salvage that, the value in that permit and sell it to someone else, maybe sell it to the landowner or sell it to another business.
Okay.
And so theoretically, it's possible, but in practice, we haven't seen that happen yet. We have seen a number of businesses sell, and mergers happen, but we haven't seen, you know, a situation, to my knowledge, where a business has actually come back in and said, you know, we're closing our shop, here's your use permit back. And I honestly, I don't think that 20 use permits would be enough in this area to, you know, significantly disadvantage any existing business due to, you know, competitive forces. And, you know, if anything, I mean, you know, allowing the flexibility within that system so that the businesses that have the ability to make it, you know, are rising to the top and being able to make it, and so that, you know, you're going to have one of two situations. Either it's going to be a lot of small players, and everyone's, you know, somehow collaborating together to get, you know, the, get to market, or you may end up with, you know, a couple of large players that are really dominating that market.
So if you were to increase the cap, is there a way that you can, you know, with regards to diversity, like, say, X amount of this type of manufacturing, or, does that make any sense? So that you're not getting imbalanced in, like, everybody's doing, you know, the same type of?
Yeah. Yes, you could, and I would not advise it because I believe that if we had that information, if we knew what the exact mix was and were able to predict that, that we would probably be in the cannabis industry, making loads of money, making the right bets. What we've experienced over time is that the kinds of businesses, when we established this, you know, this zone, that we thought were going to be profitable, and were going to be really the, you know, the key sort of niche market for Arcata, we were totally off. We were completely wrong. And we've watched the state also respond in the way that they allow their licenses to be held, because the structure that was created by the state was so rigid and compartmentalized, it segregated business types that should naturally be bound together. And so I think for the city of Arcata to sit back and say, well, we're going to make sure that we have this real well-blended business landscape, and we want to make sure that we have, you know, 30% manufacturers and 30% distributors, and so on and so forth, we would be, you know, making guesses that were completely baseless, not grounded in any fact whatsoever. And even if we could determine what those facts are for today, what is best for the market for today, the market would shift, and it's going to change, and we're not going to be able to catch up with our regulation. So I would, I would offer that, you know, if we have a cap in the first place, that we just make the cap to use permits in general, and then we evaluate the use permits through our process with the planning commission to decide, you know, does that fit with the, you know, the ecosystem, if you will?
One more question. So there really isn't a race to increase or remove the cap at this time, is what I'm hearing. We still have four more permits. Is there any reason that we wouldn't want to revisit that, at which time we've actually hit the 20 mark and we have new players that want to come into the market?
My only reason for doing it now is that we're not under the gun, we're not being pressured by Business A or Business B, number one, and number two, oftentimes, these things come in in clusters. Like Joe was saying, we have two folks that he's spoken with in the past couple of weeks that want to do it. It wouldn't be unreasonable to see three or four come in all at once, and then it puts an interesting pressure on both staff and the planning commission to be choosing the top four among five, for example, or did it matter, you know, who got their permit in first, and, you know, are we missing an opportunity? So we have the opportunity right now to do some planning without having the pressure of having someone's livelihood be on the line. So that's, I guess, why I would recommend we deal with it now.
Thank you.
Other questions?
My inclination would be to either raise the cap or totally eliminate it and let the market forces play out. I would not worry much about disadvantaging the existing folks. I think that actually, there can be a certain amount of synergy that would evolve, having all these organizations, businesses in the same, in the same field, you know, kind of like Silicon Valley. You'd be collecting, gathering a lot of expertise and capital and so on. So I, yeah, I don't, I would lean against holding the cap where it is or trying to limit the businesses that go in. Because, you know, as David said, we don't know what kind of proposals are going to come up in the future. We don't know which way the whole industry is going, and it's not too predictable. But it is predictable that if we limit the cap to 20, that growth will not happen.
I remember one of the reasons that the city supported the cap in the first place was because there was fear that competition for cannabis permits in our industrial zones would drive up rents for businesses that are not in cannabis, to the point where they would basically be driven out of our industrial areas as landlords increase rents. And so I'd like to ask, do we have any information about what the industrial rents are in areas within the Area 2 zone? And if we don't, is there any way of getting that information?
Yeah, I do have some anecdotal information from speaking with people that I can share with you now, and I do believe that there's a way to get additional information. And Joe, please, you know, jump in and share your knowledge as well. The long story short is this, I think some of the fear was that we would see this wholesale conversion, and that we would see, you know, businesses being run out because of the prices being driven up. We did see some displacement. We did see some initial spikes in rents. We did see a lot of speculation early on, both within the city boundaries and outside the city boundaries. But we've also seen some of these properties that were basically, you know, maybe not go so far as to say blight, but, you know, defunct, with owners who, you know, were aging and starting to think about, you know, their transition plan, who had been engaged in an industry that is now dead, for all intents and purposes, that has now seen an opportunity for them to sell their property, be able to retire, and have this new, you know, these new owners come in and invest significant amounts of money into revitalization of this area. And so it's been a real mixed bag. I think that the prices have come down a little bit as, you know, as reality is starting to hit. There's a lot of competition there, you know, statewide, and the businesses are having a really hard time making things work with the, you know, with the state. And so I'm sure some of these contracts have been renegotiated as businesses have said, hey, look, you know, I'd like to stay here, I'm sure you'd like me to stay here, I can't afford this rent anymore, and when I work through my permitting process, you know, we might be back there, but not right now. And I know a lot of, a lot of businesses, especially in the northern part of Area 2, several of those properties have come in and really done, you know, significant improvements to their properties and have not just one business, but multiple businesses operating off those properties. So, you know, I think that there's, you know, we could certainly garner a lot more information, but there's, you will still hear the occasional person who attributes, maybe correctly, maybe erroneously, their inability to set up shop in Arcata to the cannabis innovation zone. And it's probably not completely unfounded, but I think that part of the, you know, part of the issue here is that the reality of the matter is that we have lots and lots of available acreage of industrially-zoned properties right now that still aren't being used. And so if there was a displacement, the intent behind having one specific zone where that would happen, instead of making it industrial limited parcels all over, was to ensure that we would retain some industrial limited properties. Clearly, if the prices went up here and there became more competition for other industrial limited properties, say, along the K Street corridor, prices maybe have gone up there as well, you know, sort of a, you know, all boats rising effect. But we have not seen the wholesale relocation or displacement of businesses in this area or in Arcata in general. In fact, there seems to be a little bit of a, you know, medium to large industrial renaissance going on right now. You've seen, you know, some of the, for instance, the mill that's opened over on Samoa, you know, which is sort of a outside mill, mill works. So there's, you know, there's quite a bit going on right now, and I think that it's really overall added more vibrancy to the area than it has detracted from the area. It's my sense.
Yeah, I think that, you know, one of the reasons I was asking about that displacement is the idea that before legalization of adult use is when we set that cap, and it was really anticipating a changed legal environment that we were pretty unclear on. We really didn't know what was going to be happening. And now, having decided that we'd take a double-control approach through the use permits and the cap, through the use permits and the cap, you know, three years later, we're seeing four, maybe five permits max coming in a year. And it does make sense to review that cap this year just in case there are going to be five applicants for four permit places. But I think that our use permit approach has been pretty effective in terms of ensuring that applicants who were able to fulfill the terms of those use permits were also going to have some chance of actually doing what they applied to do. So I don't really see the purpose of that double level of control anymore. And I think this is probably a really good time to review, not just whether to raise the cap, but whether, if we have that use permit requirement, we need the cap anymore at all. We're in a different legal climate and certainly the whole industrial zoning scene and industrial redevelopment scene in Arcata is pretty different now than it was when we first started talking about this in 2014, 2015.
Julie?
Are we seeing many businesses coming into Arcata other than cannabis? Are we staying diverse? We are seeing other businesses?
Yeah, I, you know, it's a little shocking because one of the impacts of legalization is that there's a lot less cash in Humboldt County. And all of the retail businesses have told me about it, you know, that I've talked to. They've, you know, mentioned that, you know, there's not as much cash. The initial thing that happened was that there was a real drop-off in retail sales in general. And people were, you know, starting to get concerned, understandably. And, you know, I think, you know, I was concerned that we were going to potentially see a complete reset on the Humboldt County economy and the city of Arcata's economy in general. What folks are saying now is that it's still slightly depressed than, you know, back in the day, prior to legalization. And that what they're seeing a lot more of now is people are using cards instead of cash. And so, you know, the economy is transitioning, it's shifting. So there's still a lot of that retail going on. And despite the fact that we've had, you know, a little bit of a slump, you know, here and there, retail seems to be, you know, kind of with this new normal, kind of, you know, following a trend, you know, a pretty stable trend, not a decreasing trend. And then in addition, you know, it seems like there are a lot of new businesses opening up in the past couple of years.
Non-cannabis?
Non-cannabis businesses opening up that are, you know, creating, you know, I don't know how related they are. I don't, you know, know that they're related at all. But, you know, I mean, nationwide, and this is true of our state and the county as well, is that, you know, unemployment is low and industry is up. And so, you know, we are definitely seeing that non-cannabis industry in Arcata, you know, those new starts. So I don't know how to connect the two, though. I'm not sure if, you know, if there is a connection.
Okay. I always think diversity is like so important, even though back in the day, all we had was timber and fishing and everything seemed to be fine. But within that zone, you know, the projects or the, yeah, projects that had come before us, it's quite diverse within, none of them are doing the exact same thing. So it actually is its own little diversity. So I actually think maybe we possibly should get rid of the cap and just let, like John said, let the market dictate.
Well, I thoroughly support getting rid of and/or elevating the cap. And I also wonder why we have Area 1 and Area 2. I never quite understood how that map was created in terms of, you know, a bit down here and a bit over here and a bit up there, being in one principally permitted zone and the rest not. So I could sure be convinced, one way or the other, that, you know, perhaps they should be blended. Maybe that's another night. But I'm thrilled with everything that's occurred out there. When I drive through, the redevelopment, the parking lots being full and it being such a healthy-looking environment work-wise, I don't see people hanging out. I don't see people smoking. I don't see people dragging around or anything, you know? There's more problems on the plaza than there are in the Cannabis Innovation Zone on an average day, I would say. So it feels like it was a very smart idea from the beginning and that it's playing out in a very clean and healthy way. And most importantly, there are other places that could be developed for similar light industrial purposes around town. I mean, there are other spaces, as David pointed out. So if there is a pressure for more occupancy from other businesses, that's thrilling, too. And we have Happy Valley in the future and the Gateway Corridor and the Schmidt Bar property out here on Q Street and other places that feel like they're on the edge of developing similar light industrial spaces. So that's my input. Oh, and the other thing is that in terms of competition between these businesses, I can only imagine that 90% or perhaps even a whole bunch more than that of their products are not being sold locally, but shipped far away and bringing in valuable income to our area from other areas. So I would hate to squeeze them in any way.
So it seems like one of the, one of the can of worms that we may be opening here also is reconsideration of those use permits in our Area 2 in addition to considering either eliminating or raising the cap. I mean, historically, it was really clear why we had Area 1 and Area 2. After Area 1 was designated as the Cannabis Innovation Zone, a bunch of other property owners wanted to get in on the act. And so I think the city council kind of directed us to figure out a way to let them in on it, too. And then all of a sudden, we had an entire industrial district where either primarily or conditionally permitted cannabis businesses would be allowed. And that was as a way to prevent those industrial businesses from opening up shop in the rest of the city. And that was before legalization. So, you know, maybe that Area 1, Area 2 is a historical remnant that we want to reconsider, too. You know, that's a little bit tougher because it really does relax control overall. And if we reconsider that division, then maybe we need to reconsider whether we really need to limit those cannabis production areas to the Cannabis Innovation Zone altogether or, you know, allow that to open up in the rest of our industrial zones in the city. And I think that, I think the city was wise in designating a limited zone for those businesses. And I don't think I would necessarily want to go that far in the near future. But, you know, certainly if you're considering getting rid of the cap, you need to really look at, you know, that remnant of differentiating between properties whose owners got in on that act at first and those who wanted to follow along.
Do you want a little context as to why Area 1 and Area 2? I mean, I think Judy hit on some of the elements of it. But it was, and it did evolve exactly as you mentioned, Commissioner Mayor, is that the city was originally intending to do just Area 1. And in fact, Area 1 was originally just the southern portion. And it was really designed to eliminate blight, you know, encompass the, you know, large portion of the Old Flakeboard Mill, which was, you know, basically, you know, blighted property. And so we were trying to incentivize redevelopment of that property through this program. And then the northern area of Area 1, several of those landowners came forward and said, hey, look, you know, we're ready to go, you know? It's, you know, and we have some properties that may not be as badly blighted, but we, you know, we're ready to start, you know, obtaining permits right now and we're ready to go. And so Area 1 became those two areas. You were either blighted and this would incentivize redevelopment or you were, in fact, ready to go right then and there and could be sort of on the forefront of the permitting. And then by incorporating Area 2, which you're right, the rest of the property owners came and said, hey, whoa, what's the deal? You know, I'd like to take advantage of this as well. The use permit and the cap, the limitations were intended to, you know, prevent that runaway displacement and speculation. I think it's served its purpose and I think you all recognize that as well now. We're not, I don't think, at this point recommending that we revisit the Area 1 and Area 2. I think that the use permit still probably serves a purpose, but I haven't really thought about it that much. So be willing to, you know, put some thought into that and bring some information back to the Planning Commission.
Well, it sounds like everybody up here is relatively open to the capping increased at minimum, if not eliminated. Is that, is there any more feedback or discussion you'd like to pursue?
No, we're planning on bringing this to the city council, the same discussion in the city council on, I believe, March 4th and get their sense for it. If it seems like everybody wants us to initiate a code amendment, then we would certainly initiate a lot. We didn't notice this meeting. We haven't told anybody we were going to talk to you about this. This is the first opportunity we've had to, you know, alert the public to this discussion. We'll do a lot more public engagement and reach out if we do initiate a code amendment. Joe is kicking me under the table and asking me to ask you if you'd like to accept a public comment. It is a business item, you know, but it is something that, you know, perhaps the public would be interested in.
Absolutely. The public's been this patient. So let's open up this item to any public comment at this point, if either of you would like to step up.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Ross Gordon. I'm Policy Director at Humboldt County Growers Alliance. We're a local trade association representing not just growers, but the entire cannabis supply chain, about 250 businesses. Really appreciate sort of the thoughtfulness of this whole conversation. Just to touch on a few of the points which are raised, we definitely see the business in the innovation zone as being more synergistic than competitive. As I think staff mentioned, the way that the state permits are sort of distributed tend to chop things up into a lot of different categories. And a lot of times it creates logistical issues with you have one business type, you would like to do certain things, you're not able to. But you also don't have the ability to get multiple licenses. And so having this sort of campus where lots of different license types can do business with each other, I think is really helpful for a lot of businesses. Also in terms of sort of that competitiveness, I think at least the way we tend to see it, obviously there is competition among many of these businesses. But really, a lot of the competition is between, you know, Humboldt County, Arcata and the Bay Area and Los Angeles in terms of manufacturing and distribution. And how much of that activity happens here? And how much of that do we have to outsource to Oakland or to somewhere else? And I think over the long term, it's a big economic driver for this area. And even looking forward, you know, federal opportunities seem like they may be opening up in the relatively near future. And I think we're well-positioned to be a real center in sort of a Silicon Valley, as you mentioned, for manufacturing and distribution. So appreciate the consideration of this item. We definitely, you know, like the idea of opening up to more businesses. Last thing I'll say, I think we have an enormous amount of independent businesses here in Humboldt County, independent farms. We have, I think, over 700 cultivation permits in the county now, which are mostly small independent farms. And the ability to keep the supply chain here, the manufacturing and the distribution, to keep that in town and to keep that local and not outsource that somewhere else is one of our greatest strengths and something that really keeps this entire thing moving. So thank you for your consideration on this.
Thank you for your input. Would anybody else in the public like to speak on this matter? Thanks. Close that. Thanks for that suggestion, Joe. Any other comments or points to be made? Yeah, it's very interesting stuff. All right, we will close that business item and move on to correspondence and communication.
I have just a couple of items. One, I wanted to alert the Planning Commission to the fact that the city council is currently going through their goal setting, pretty much as we speak. They had a meeting last night where we discussed the priority projects that were on last year's list and some that were added for this year. Update on, status update on those and which ones should carry forward into this coming fiscal year. And then tomorrow night, again, in these chambers, starting at 5:30, the city council will pick up with goals for 2020 and 2021 fiscal year and taking the recommendations the Planning Commission, the various committees made as goals that they should consider. They'll be bringing those up as well as the goals that staff has recommended. So they're making good progress towards those. And then we'll be moving forward to, you know, the next stages of the budget cycle, proposing, you know, revenues, expenditures and so on and so forth. So if you're interested in coming tomorrow night, it's an open meeting. Certainly, all those out in, you know, the wider world are welcome to come as well. It starts at 5:30 here in the city council chambers. I also wanted to remind you or make mention that March 26th is the tentative and likely date for the chairs and vice chairs' study session with the city council. And so that would be after you've had a couple of meetings in March. And what we will be doing is bringing forward an agenda item to formally discuss any items that the Planning Commission wants to forward through their emissaries of the chair and vice chair to the city council for that discussion. So that's, those are the two items I have. Joe, did you have anything?
The CEQA training, did you want to mention that or?
Yes.
On the 28th, is that right?
I'm sorry, I don't know if I have that date on the top of my head, but I will.
I guess February 28th.
Yeah, it's coming, the last Friday of the month.
Yeah. And if we want to go, John, you signed up? And I think I'm going to.
Okay, let me just double check that.
Anyway, anything else?
I'll take your word for it. I don't have it on my calendar, but I'm sure it will be there. February 28th, Planning Commissioner Tagney, Chair Tagney mentioned the February 28th CEQA training.
Yeah, it's a Friday, right, John? Yeah. All right, anything else from anybody else?
It might be worth mentioning that there are just the five of us up here and that we're looking for a couple of people to join us and fill out the Planning Commission with seven members.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and the city council is taking up, I believe, on March 4th, interviews for planning commissioners. So get your applications in.
All right. With that, we will adjourn. Thank you.